We call this September meeting of the Lee County Board of Education to order. I'd like to introduce a couple of guests before we begin. Laurie Salafia from the military is here with us again. And Zach Horner is with us representing the Sanford Herald. We always appreciate your attendance here. And you can now join me in a moment of silence as we reflect on the events of the day. Thank you, and if you'd now stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public comments this evening, so I will continue with Lee County School's mission. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. Now I'd like to visit the code of ethics that governs our behavior. We must, as board members, avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And we must avoid making confidential information public. And is there a motion to approve the agenda for September the 13th, 2016?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda of September 13th, 2016.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The agenda is approved. And I would also like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of eight, nine, 2016, and nine, six, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for eight, nine, 2016, and nine, six, 2016.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Our agenda is approved. And we can now continue with announcements. And under Chairman's report, I have a couple of things. For those, anybody who could not attend the Lee County Schools convocation that was held on August 27th, really missed a good time. There were probably a thousand people there, teachers and supportive staff. And it was one exciting occasion. I saw one set of schoolteachers line dancing at the front before they started. Never seen that kind of excitement before. It was really outstanding. And I'd like to remind the board that the North Carolina School Board Association awards nominations are due on October the 4th. So if anybody would like to revisit those awards, I have a copy here. And if anybody would like to make a nomination, it could be done tonight. Otherwise, it would take a call board meeting before October the 4th. And I'd like to compliment, I guess, the superintendent, whoever did it. I went to our policy section on the Lee County School website today, and it is really user-friendly. I don't remember getting to policies, and policies I wanted this easily and this quickly.
Credit for that goes to Dr. Atkinson and Sharon Spence for their hard work on putting that together, along with several other folks, I believe, as well.
Well, you did a superb job, because it's the easiest it's ever been. You certainly have my appreciation. Job well done. And we can continue with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to begin by asking our Finance Department to come forward, please. Chief Finance Officer Kelly Jones. And this might take a couple of minutes, but I want to recognize them for their efforts. They have achieved a very distinct honor, once again. And just allow me to read this, because I think it's worth reading. I think a credit to our Finance Department and the great work that they do for our school district. Recognizing the Lee County Schools Finance Department tonight, not only by our district, but our state has recognized the Finance Department. They have earned three different awards. The Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, called the GFOA, established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles, to prepare a comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. So our Finance Department won that award from the state this year. They also won the Association of School Business Officers Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is this national award is given annually to finance officers who have voluntarily submitted their school system's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, for review. The ASBO Panel of Review presents this award for those CAFRs which meet or exceed ASBO standards. A district earning the Certificate of Excellence received not only the award, but enhanced credibility for the financial management of its school system. So we're keeping count here, two awards. The third award, State Schools' Recognition of Achievement for Financial Resource Management. This award is presented annually to finance officers of units who have shown effective cash management and use of state funds, accurate and timely financial reporting, and no salary audit exceptions or position overdrafts as of fiscal year-end. So our Finance Department won three awards for financial excellence for school districts. Our Finance Department was one of only 12 districts out of 115 in the state to receive all three awards at the Financial and Business Services Summer Conference held in July. To add on to that, Sharon Baldwin and Kelly Jones were honored on 7/2016 at that same meeting as graduates of the NCASBO Certified School Business Director Program. And that program is intended for persons employed in the school business area, or current finance officer, or someone interested in becoming a school finance officer as well. It's highly recommended for current school finance officers, and prerequisite of BA or BS in business-related curriculum, accounting, finance, or business. So our folks have earned the certificates that they need, certainly at a higher level at the state level, in one of only 12 school districts in the state, to earn all three awards. Let's give them a round of applause for all they did. And if you would, maybe the Chair and Vice Chair would like to go down front, or everybody would like to go down front and shake hands. We have a certificate to present to them, and I'll call their names out, and you can present that.
Do you want us to get up?
That'd be great. Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to call by name at a time. Sharon, I'll just hand you each one. The first award, if the Chair can hand this out, to our Chief Finance Officer, Kelly Second certificate goes to Sharon Baldwin. And then we have three different certificates to hand out. The Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. Excellence in Management of the North Carolina State Public School Fund. And then the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this is really heavy. So please, one more round of applause for our group. Just very proud of you all, and just how much we appreciate what you do every day to support the district and keeping everybody, everything straight and in good working order. So thank you for everything you do.
Andy, if I can just say something as the Chair of the Finance Committee, I just want to say how much I appreciate these ladies and how they do their work and doing, preparing things for us and bringing it to the meeting. Sandra can attest to that, too.
Absolutely.
So we want to say thank you for what you do for our system and working with you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have had to reschedule our Superintendent's Extra Effort Award again tonight. It's becoming a recurring theme, but we will be in good shape for our next one. I do have some news to report tonight for our accountability update. This is probably a repeat of some news you've heard before. But I will say, just like to sort of repeat some of the information we received on September 1st for our accountability results from the state. We feel very, very good about the progress that we've made. As many of you know, we have 16 schools in our school district. Thirteen of those schools are included in our, sort of, the traditional accountability system for the state of North Carolina. Three of our schools, Warren Williams, Floyd Knight, and Bragg Street, are in the alternative accountability system. We will be having some information coming out about them as well very soon. They did well themselves, but we like to highlight them sort of in a separate, some separate information. So for our 13 schools, all 13 schools compared to last year improved their score that determines the overall performance grade. And everybody knows that our performance grades are based on, they can be a system set up by the state, and those numbers on a 15-point scale are then assigned letter grades. So all 13 of our schools in this system improved their performance grade score from last year, and that's based on the state formula of 80% proficiency and 20% growth. All 13 schools improved their composite score, which is the total number of tests passed from last year. Seven schools improved one performance grade, performance letter grade from last year, meaning they improved from one letter grade higher, seven of 13. And all schools were a letter grade of C or better. And we're one of the few school districts in the region to have no D or F schools, which is very good. Lee Early College earned the school district's first-ever A grade. Eight of 13 schools made or exceeded growth, which doubled the number from the 2014-15 school year. Eleven of 13 schools increased their growth index from last year, which is what determines growth. So 11 of 13 improved from last year. Our ACT proficiency rate improved 9.7 points from last year, and puts us just under the state average for that. Our graduation rate increased from 89.1 to 89.2 percent, and that's still above the state average of 85.8. So we feel certainly good about our progress. We are committed to continuous improvement, as you know, which means that we're always committed to getting better and continuing to do things better and working on the things that we can improve throughout our school district. And we will not rest until that happens. I would like to share a couple of other things. In about a week and a half, we're going to be releasing our More Than a Diploma data, where we keep track. You, as a school board, have set a very positive and strong goal for all students to graduate with more than a high school diploma. We'll be releasing that information in about a week and a half to determine where we are. We set the baseline last year, and we'll be releasing that to see how we're doing in that regard. I will add a couple of notes, just to let you know, a couple of things that have already come out, and I've announced in a couple of different places and meetings that we've had. From last year, we had an increase of associate degrees within the district. We increased 17 from last year. We awarded 57 associate degrees to members of the class of 2016. And one note that I shared yesterday with the Chamber Policy Committee. The class of 2015 earned just over 1,600 college credits. Most of that through Lee Early College and Central Carolina Works, a partnership with the Community College. The class of 2016 earned 2,300 college credits, a very nice increase. Other than that, we're continuing to work hard towards our goals and what we're trying to do as a school district. Feel like we're moving in the right direction. We've gotten off to a positive start. An article in the paper last week, we documented our support for teachers throughout the system and all the things we've done to try to make sure that, as we were this year, be fully staffed on day one for our schools, which is really important. And certainly publicly have credited the support of this community, not only in our accountability results and the things we've achieved, but also supporting us with our students and their hard work, and the hard work of our teachers and the commissioners for supporting us with their increase in local supplement for classified and certified Questions or thoughts?
Well, Dr. Brown, on behalf of the board, and I'm sure I speak for the entire board when I say this, congratulations to you, congratulations to our administrators in the central office, certainly to our teachers and our students. This just represents hard work, and we could not be prouder of the work that you've put into it and the outcome, because I think this really represents substantial progress on the academic performance of our students. And I certainly, as a board member, am delighted with the outcome, and we're looking forward to next year. We will do the same thing again and represent this kind of improvement. So congratulations. And if anybody else on the board would like to comment on this, it's a good time.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say a congratulation also. For some of us who have been on this board for a long time, I met Lynn and Cameron here on this board. And when we came on, I remember that it was 63 or 64 percent graduation rate. And at that time, it was just interesting. There is no place for it to go further down except to go up. So I remember that our campaign was about increasing the graduation rate. That's what was really very important. And when you look at the job that, over the last six, seven years, the job that our teachers have done every year, and especially this board and this superintendent, what we've done to increase, and the teachers to increase the number, it's something that we ought to be proud of. We are not where we want to be yet, but we are not where we used to be. And when you look at it, if your child, I'll just use this little analogy, if your child is almost as close to academic suspension, and now that child just came out and just passed all the courses with good grades, you, as a parent, will be proud. You're not going to say, "You didn't make As on all of them." You'll say, "You know what? We are glad that you are where you are now." So I want to say that from my heart, that our school system is really improving and on the upward bound, and that's something to be proud of, the effort of our teachers and the superintendent and this board. Collaboration is what got us to where we are. I was telling somebody yesterday, I said ideology is something that will hinder progress, because you will not be able to look at the, you're not going to be able to look at the forest from the tree. But on this board, we don't have all of that. We work together as a team and as one. So I just want to say thank you to the board and to our teachers who have made this possible. We don't teach in the classroom, but if something don't go well, people come to us and be accusing us. But for those people who are on the front line, the administrators, every one of you, I want to say thank you.
I want to add to that for someone that has not been on the board for a million years. Congratulations. Congratulations, because when I came on this board last year about this time, folks were shaking their heads a little bit. You brought us a plan. The school district, the teachers, the principals worked the plan, and you got the results. And that's what it takes. That's what continuous improvement means, and you've put your money where your mouth is. Congratulations to the whole district.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I would like to also say congratulations to the board, the superintendent, and to all the teachers, and that how pleased I am of the results, and that we are moving in the right direction, and the community can be proud of our school district.
I want to kind of, I agree with what everyone has said so far, with Dr. Smith said in the beginning. And, you know, last year, when we had that plan that the superintendent brought forward, and I saw everybody working hard throughout the district on all levels, administrators, teachers, I mean, it was, everyone was like, had a really great attitude, they were just going at it full steam, and everyone was working really, really hard. And so when this, when it came out, you know, our grades came out this year, and our scores came out, of course, I was very happy. But I just knew it was from all the hard work and dedication that the teachers have put through, and central office staff, administrators. I mean, it was really a team effort as a district working together, and I saw that all year long. So I was so excited to see the improvement, because it just shows all, you know, it's proof of all the hard work that had went into it all year long. And it was a lot of work. There was a lot of things that we've tried that were new, and that have, you know, the ACT prep, and then the extra summer schools, and the things that we've done this year that are different, that were new. And I'm really excited about moving forward. I'm excited about continuous improvement. I'm excited about, you know, we've made great improvement throughout the school year from last year, and I'm excited about moving forward with that and keeping that momentum going over the next couple of years. And I'm really excited to see where we can go in Lee County Schools over the next couple of years. I really am. So I'm just real excited about it. But I say congratulations to everyone, because it really was, it's a phenomenal job. I know it's so hard to make that happen and all the work it put into it, so I just want to say congratulations to everyone in the district.
I guess I'll dovetail on to that. It just seemed like three years ago, we'd been thrown a curveball with the change of Common Core, and it just felt like everything that we had done, there was a whole new protocol, there was a whole new world. It was like changing sports. You had to relearn the rulebook before you could really play the game. And the first round of testing, needless to say, the results weren't where we wanted to be. And now that we, our teachers and our administrators have their feet under them, because it did very much, I think, across the district, the thing you heard is it felt like the rug had been pulled out. The game had changed, the rules had changed, and what we were being tested on had changed. And now that we have a game plan, and we have a lot of the tracking, and we have better communication across the district, and we have teachers talking to each other in a more, I guess, unified manner, and then we have it tracking from elementary to middle and middle to high. And I think we have a game plan in place that, as long as we keep playing, I kind of think of a sports analogy. You know, we had a young team, we were in the third year of this, and we're expecting to do great things in year four. It's kind of like we're growing into our own as this new organized organism that's functioning together. And so it's exciting to see all of the pieces working together, and nowhere to go but up from here. Thank you.
I would just like to address the person who wrote the nasty letter in the Sanford Herald criticizing our school district, you know, saying we don't have anywhere to go but up, but that graduation rate is kind of consistent. So I think we should take a bow on that. And it seems like those people always have, seem to have the answers, but they don't ever run for office. So that's about all I got to say about it.
Anybody else? In that case, I'd like to continue with committee reports, and the first committee report is the Curriculum Instruction. And Dr. Livingston is going to give this report, and due to Mrs. Brogan's absence at CNI meeting last, so if you'll proceed with that, then I think Mrs. Brogan would like the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The High School Curriculum and Instruction Committee met on Wednesday, September the 7th at 3:30 at the Lee County High School. Each school principal stated that they were very excited about the opening of school. Also, each principal stated that they were, there were no major glitches that took place on the first day. The committee also recommends the approval of the Beginning Teacher Support Program and Mentoring Plan, as presented by Ms. Patricia Cauldron. And then one exciting note is that there was a $45,000 grant from Lenovo Scholars Network that was received by Lee County High School, and that's going to be an excellent opportunity for them to get more technology, technological experience in that area. The Middle School CNI meeting is canceled for September the 14th, and the Elementary School CNI Committee meeting is scheduled on Wednesday, September the 21st, at Deep River. So that is the report, and I defer to...
Mrs. Brogan.
Ms. Brogan.
I just wanted to say how much I was sorry to miss the CNI meeting. I wish I could have been there. The end of August, my father-in-law fell down a flight of stairs, and he did not recover. He passed away a little over a week ago. And so I had spent a lot of time in Pittsburgh, that's where he lives. Over the last month, I was up there twice, once when he first fell, and then later on for the funeral. So that's why I missed the CNI meeting last week. And I also missed a convocation, and I was so heartbroken about that, because I really wanted to go so much to the convocation, and I heard it was so much fun, and it was great, and I just felt so sad that I missed it. So that's why I had not been there, and you all know, if I could have been there, I would have been there. So I do appreciate all the condolences, though, to my family for that loss. And it was just, you know, tragically unexpected, just a freak accident, and just did not end well. So we're getting through it as a family, but I just want to thank everyone for your condolences as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Let's continue with Facilities and Technology. Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last Facilities and Technology meeting was August 23rd. We discussed possible land sale adjacent to, around BT Bullet, and we also talked about our energy savings plan, but still talks about that. And our next meeting will be September 27th, 5 o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Finance, Mr. Akonoshu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on the 25th of August, and we were able to discuss several things. One of the items was the National School Boards Association. We approve three board members who will be going to Colorado for the School Board Association. And we look at the board experience, it was a very short meeting, was one of the shortest, so I was glad to get out of there and go home. So our next board meeting will be on the 25th of September.
Thank you, Mr. Akonoshu. Policy, Mrs. Bowen.
The originally scheduled policy meeting had to be delayed, because the state decided not to put forward four policies, and they wanted to review them, and then they did so. And then they demanded that we have them in place by 1 October. So it was hurry up and wait, and then hurry up again. But nonetheless, we had a called meeting on Friday, September 9th, and we reviewed four policies regarding the construction of facilities and the management of change orders and all this fun. And we actually have those four policies on for new business this evening, because mandate requires that they be on the books. So when we get to, I guess, new business, we will need to suspend our policy regarding the adoption to avoid two readings of these policies, but they've been out for our review. And we'll look at...
these policies, but they've been out for our review, and, uh, we'll look at those momentarily. And I forgot to write down when our next policy meeting is, but I'll be sure to let you know.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowen. Uh, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is approved. Uh, we do not have any unfinished business, but another new business is, is a policy that's just been described by Mrs. Bowen, and apparently, we need to have this done by October the first, which would require a, a call meeting, and we felt like it would be better to suspend the policy that requires a second reading, uh, for, for this, uh, to happen. So, the first thing that we would need is a motion...
It's written as a combined motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll get to it. Here it is. Uh, we need a motion to suspend policy twenty-four-twenty, which requires a second reading, so that we can approve this on, uh, first reading, and have it in place by October first, as requested by the legislature.
It's twenty-four-ten. Policy twenty-four-ten is the adoption?
No, it's, it's twenty-four-twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, in my notes.
It's twenty.
Thank you.
So, if there's a motion to suspend motion twenty-four-twenty?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on suspending that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. So, motion, uh, uh, policy twenty-four-twenty has been suspended, and now, uh, I would entertain a motion that, uh, would allow the Lee County Board of Educ- well, no, we gotta move on, to, uh, approve the following policies, sixty-four-twenty, eighty-seven-twenty, ninety-thirty, ninety-two-ten, and ninety-one-thirty. So, is there a motion to approve those four policies?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the four policies, uh, twenty, sixty-four-twenty, eighty-seven-twenty, uh, ninety-thirty, twenty-one-tw- ninety-one-twenty, and ninety-one-thirty.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion has been approved. Uh, the policies are, are, are approved, and we can put them in, in action. And at this point, uh, Mr. Akonoshu, uh, if you'll, uh, make the motion, we can continue with closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGA Section one-four-three dash three-one-eight dot one-one bracket eight bracket one.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We can continue in closed session. Thank Back in the open session, uh, the first order of business would be a motion to approve the human resource report as approved, as, uh, presented.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the human resources report as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The, uh, human resources report is approved, and, uh, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.